Well, everybody has all the evidence sealed. Ken, I'll let you do the present for the introductions.
Thank you, Chair. We're sorry, I'll go quick so that they can get up there for their presentation. Montgomery County, basically, who are we? What do we want to be? Who do we want to attract? Who do we want to come here? What direction do we go? It seems for years, decades around here, we have 21 municipalities and the population of 50,000 people. And it seems like 21 municipalities are going up in opposite directions. We've always talked about looking at who we are, what direction we want to go collectively. You know, we've talked about it, but we've never taken that next step and done the investment to do it right. And what we decided to do, we started talking about a few months ago with this, is actually let's spend the money, let's partner with the county, with the county IDA. And we just got the work letter from National Grid who's coming up with the cost of this project, which is good, so they partnered with us on this as well. We started probably eight, nine months ago, I think, at the IDA level with regards to going out and soliciting RFPs to see who could do this type of community branding. And we looked at local firms, we looked at regional firms, we looked at several national firms. We interviewed probably over a dozen people, dozen firms. I bet you had a couple of the front IDA meetings. So, North Star Destinations, out of Nashville. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lori Odom.
Hello, greetings from Nashville, and thank you so much for letting us be here to talk with you tonight. As Ken so graciously said, my name is Lori Odom. I am the VP of Research and Economic Development with North Star Destination Strategies, based in Nashville, Tennessee. This is my colleague, Anthony Demini. He is my Italian ace in the hole during my time here in Montgomery County. The name gives us smiles when we say it. I asked him to give me an Italian last name when he introduced me, but he just wouldn't. So, we're going to talk to you for about the next 45 minutes about what we do, about community branding, why it's important, what you can expect from it. About half of you will be awake when we're done, and half will be asleep. We'll wake you up when it's over if you're not, if you're in that second group. We are North Star Destination Strategies. Community branding is all we do. We work with cities, counties, municipalities, states, special corridors, all around the US and Canada, to help them identify what is their differentiator and then help them develop a brand from that. We've been in 38 states and 150 cities. So we've been all over the US, from large places like the state of Florida, where we worked with them on their business brand, to small cities like Grand Rivers, Kentucky, which is 368 people, helping them develop their brand, to everywhere in between. So, you can sit, I won't make you stand through the whole.
He's going to do part of the presentation, but you can sit if you don't want to.
So what is community branding? Many of you are probably wondering, when Ken says "community branding," what is this? What are these people going to do? In order for us to understand community branding, let's talk a little bit about a brand, okay? So what does a brand mean? We have a saying in our office that your brand is what they say about you when you're not around. When you're not around, each one of you guys has a reputation. We all have a reputation. Um, it's, uh-oh, uh-oh, we've got some agreement there. We've got some good reputations, some bad reputations. Communities are no different in that respect. You all have a brand, you all have a reputation. So if your brand is what they say about you when you're not around, branding is what you do about it. So this is our active way to influence what people say about you when you're not around. We also say that brand, the term "brand" has a branding problem. A lot of people think that it's only a tagline and a logo. But in reality, your brand encompasses so much more. It is all about your reputation. Your brand is built on research, intensive research, that we're going to talk about through our presentation tonight, that helps us identify the true drivers of what makes Montgomery County special, what people outside of Montgomery say, Montgomery County say about Montgomery County, what the inside people say, people who live here, what their opinions are, and how that all can be developed into a brand. So why do you brand? Some examples of great brands that you all know, you probably see every day. A great brand means never having to justify your prices. So really, that $3 cup of Starbucks is pretty much the same cup of coffee that you might pay 75 cents for when you go to Stewart's, gas up your car. But it's a brand, and it's Starbucks. You don't have to explain yourself, but you have a brand. How many of you guys know what a Google is? Does anybody know what a Google is? But we all know Google, the search engine. A great brand means you never even have to write your name. We all know Nike, we're familiar with that. A great brand can signal who's best. It can give you a public face. I like this example. How many of you have seen the Gecko, Gecko, the Geico Gecko? Probably recognize that guy, seen his Australian accent, heard him before. And a brand also gives you a legacy that endures. So those are all great reasons to wield a powerful brand. And when you're thinking about those, you're thinking about the logos, you're tying back to the reputation. You're thinking about Mercedes, the reputation of a Mercedes, not just the logo. We're in the business of managing and protecting brands, and that's what we want to help do here in Montgomery County. We want to help find the identifiers, then into the greater marketplace, when people look to put a business here in Montgomery County. I spent 13 years in economic development prior to joining North Star. And from an outside perspective, I can tell you that they don't necessarily know when they drive from Florida, from the town of Florida, the Canada-Jawory, it's all kind of the same from an outside person who's just walking in to look from a business relocation perspective. So finding the common assets that are shared, and the differentiators within those assets, are something that we want to do. We talked a little bit before that every community has a reputation, and it may not be exactly what you want it to be. It may not be positive, it may not be accurate, you've all got one. So, some examples of that. When you think bachelor party, do you think Las Vegas or Salt Lake City? If you think wine tasting, would you rather head to Sonoma or head to Detroit? It's all, all about the reputation and all about the brand. So as we've said, your brand is what they say about you when you're not around, and branding is what you do about it. And what is branding? It's the strategic orchestration of all that you do to affect what they are saying. And what this means in a community setting is it's like a barbershop quartet, is how I think about it. Everybody plays their part. Everybody's distinctive, they have their own role, but when you're all on the same page singing harmoniously, that's what we want to help do with the brand for the county. It's not about taking away what's happening in Mohawk, what's happening in Amsterdam. It's about finding that common voice and really helping to push that out into the market. We've said before that to affect what they're saying, you have to know, you have to know what they're saying. So how do you know what people are saying? This is the common theme to persuasive communication. What are people saying, and how can I affect it? We're going to talk now a little bit about our process, so you'll know what we're doing. As Ken said, this is about a 39-week process with North Star. That's what we estimate the goal time to be. We're in about week six or seven. We're in a heavy research phase right now, where we're hearing all of these voices. We are heavily, heavily rooted in research. To have a brand that resonates with your community, that resonates with the people that are going to come here, it has to be based in truth. Our process moves from research, then to a strategy, then onto creative development, and then to actions, ways you can really breathe life and incorporate that into the community. We're going to start by looking at our process as an hourglass. And if you look at the top, we call that our understanding, or our research phase. Anthony, can you talk a little bit more about our research tools and what's coming next?
Absolutely. Well, I'm going to kind of blow through these relatively quickly, so if you have any questions on the specifics of any of these pieces, some are a little bit more complex than others, please feel free to ask us. We have business cards, of course, so email us or ask us afterwards. But as Lori said, you know, we're very dedicated to research. It's about 15 pieces of research. And one of the major differences between community branding and corporate branding, or consumer branding, and as you can imagine, a lot of us at North Star come from that background, or even just schooling focused on corporate marketing. One of the major differences is that in communities, you already have strong passionate advocates for your product, which is essentially your community. So, we start with this research to, as Lori said, first uncover what your brand is, what that reputation is, and then to understand what your passionate voices are already saying about your community, and in effect, really shaping what your brand is or what your reputation is. So we start internally, and that's what we're doing right now. We start with a number of audits, we look at all of the communication materials you've used before. We get our hands on how all the different cities and municipalities are marketing themselves within the county, as well as the county. We look at all of your research and planning audits as well. We want to see all the research that's been done. Obviously, most communities we work with have been researched and prodded to death. So there's generally some research that's already been done, so we start there. We do a fam tour, and we're actually in the process of doing that this week as well. Driving around, trying to see every nook and cranny of the county that we can. We do one-on-one interviews, focus groups, and undercover interviews, which are exactly what they sound like. Pretty fun, gets some unbiased research, gives us the opportunity to ask some questions that you might not be able to get the answers that you think are actually out there. So we'll talk to your wait, you know, our wait staff, or hotelers, or just people on the street. What is there to do here? What do you think about it? Where do you go to have fun? How do you like living here? All those types of questions. We've actually already started fielding this next piece of research, which is called the Vision Survey. It's a qualitative piece of research that goes out to the community at large, or to the stakeholder group at large, excuse me. And we ask everything from right brain to left brain questions, everything, what are your assets, opportunities, to if Montgomery County were a famous person, who would it be and why? We always get some fun answers, as you can imagine. Or if Montgomery County were a consumer branding product, what would it be and why? This leads us to a quantitative survey, a community survey, that goes out to the community as a whole. So this is the opportunity for the residents to get their feedback. We can market this through a number of ways, through the press, or just on websites. Either way, it's a good opportunity to get the community involved, and again, it's quantified. So this is a good benchmarking tool as well. We ask, again, right and left brain questions here. And on that community survey, we have what we call a brand barometer. And this is one question where we ask respondents to rank Montgomery County as a place to live, work, and play on a scale of 1 to 10. We take those responses and aggregate them and compare them to the national averages in those same areas. So now we get a really good picture, succinct picture, at how your internal voices are talking about your community, your county, as a place to live, work, and play. And again, a really solid benchmark to go back and study, you know, in two, three, four, five, six years to see, okay, well, we have more promoters or more detractors when it comes to Montgomery County as a place to live, work, or play. We also do a piece of research, it's a geodemographic consumer profiling study. It's secondary data, it's through tapestry. I don't know if any of you all are familiar with that. It pulls census data, loyalty, card usage, credit card usage data, really great data. Essentially, kind of big brother-y, but really good to see the types of things that your residents like to do, the TV they watch. Really, also base level stuff. Again, it's geodemographic profiling, so we're looking at age groups, household income, all that kind of stuff. Great starting point. So that leads us to the consumer bucket. We also do a tapestry profile on your consumers. And this is a great opportunity to compare your residents and your consumers, your visitors, to see are they alike or are they different, and where are they alike and where are they different? Again, types of TV they watch, where they like to eat, where they like to shop. Great information, and again, a secondary piece of data there. We also do what we call a qualitative perception study on your external market. This is where we just get on the phone and talk to site selectors, relocation executives, state economic development and tourism executives, prospects, recently expanded businesses, prospects that maybe got away, why did they get away? Just get them on the phone and talk to them about their perceptions associated with Montgomery County. We also do what we call a consumer awareness and perception study, or CAPS study for short. This is a massive piece of research, it's a quantitative piece of research, sort of similar to the community survey, but now we're going out to your top theater markets as a whole. Again, quantified survey, asking them specific questions about their visitation to Montgomery County. What are their top descriptors of Montgomery County? If they visited, what did they do? What else did they do? Why did they not visit? Did their perception change? Was it a positive or negative change? Again, great quantified data, specifically asking your consumers about their perceptions associated with Montgomery County. This leads us to a piece of research called Top Business Prospects. It's one of our newest pieces of research. It's a really neat tool that essentially takes your tapestry data from your residents, and also the industries that are currently performing well in Montgomery County, and then finds other communities that are like Montgomery County across the country. Looks at what industries are performing well in those communities, and then develops a target list of NASICS codes based on what's currently performing well, what's performing well in communities like Montgomery County, and then develops a target list of NASICS codes for a target mile radius surrounding the county to paint a cool picture of the types of businesses that could perform well here in the county. And then that leads us to an online brand monitor. We have a tool that allows us to aggregate all the responses on, or just conversations on social media surrounding Montgomery County, as well as some of the assets within it, some of the cities within it. We want, you know, sometimes conversations aren't specific to Montgomery County. Maybe they're specific to a city within the county, or to a specific asset within. But we want to make sure we get a good picture there. And then finally, your competition. As we go through the process, we kind of sparkle in, or just kind of leave in some questions to talk about some of your competition in all, in some of these pieces of research, your vision survey, community survey, to ask about your competition, we aggregate that to give you just kind of a brief summary of your competition. We also do a positioning review. So, this is where we look at other counties in the state, or potentially outside the state, to see how they're marketing themselves. And this is a really important piece of research that is usually used as part of the creative exercise to see, okay, well, you know, there's a lot of greens and blues, there's a lot of pictures of lakes and cities, or what's their tagline, that kind of stuff. But good to see the whole landscape. So in short, lots of research, quantitative and qualitative data, secondary and primary sources of research, all of which dedicated to fully and completely uncovering what Montgomery County's reputation is in the marketplace.
So following our research, which I think is so important to the branding process, like I said, it's so important that your brand and the creative really complements what the truth is behind what's happening in the county and what the perceptions are. After all of that research, and that process takes four to five months typically, we boil down to what's called our insights. And in our insights, we develop a verbalization of all of that research in one sentence. I'm going to show you a couple of case studies, so you'll see what that looks like. It's not something that you put into a brochure, it's not something that you see in writing. It's just called a brand platform statement, and it helps us serve as the jumping off point into our next section, our next triangle there, which is creativity. And through the creativity, we do identify a brand identity, which does include a logo and a tagline, and also along with that, brand action ideas about bringing it to life. Also, we build in evaluation, and we do a checkup with you later in the process to see how the branding is going. We'll give you a long list of things and suggestions on ways to get this started in Montgomery County. We'll stay in touch with Ken and the other entities to just see where you are and see if there's any assistance that we can provide. I'm going to give you a case study today about Petersburg, Alaska. Has anybody ever been there? No, okay. Imagine southeast Alaska, kind of a small fishing village. We like to say they were reluctant marketers. They'd had some bad experiences where they'd had branding initiatives that just hadn't worked. They'd really skipped that research process and just gone right into creative, and it really hadn't taken hold. They have a really strong Norwegian heritage, it's a big part of their community. They're hardworking and modest people. So after our research process, spending four to five months with them, doing just what we described, we moved into what we call our strategic brand platform. And with that, we look at our target audience, a frame of reference, the point of difference, and the benefit. Once again, this isn't something that shows up in brochures. This is just kind of one sentence that helps jumpstart that creative and tells what's happened through all the research. For Montgomery, or for Petersburg, Alaska, their target audience, for those seeking adventure and independence, Petersburg is at the heart of southeast Alaska on the Frederick Sound, where the fishing culture is distinguished by a strong Norwegian heritage. And their benefit, so your hard work and pursuit of authenticity are rewarded. Once again, that's just what encompassed all of their research. So through that, we worked with Petersburg, Alaska, and developed a logo. This is a hand-drawn logo. It's an authentic, real logo, and a great description of what happens in their community, their fishing village, and the tagline, "Little Norway, Big Adventure." You can see here, there's multiple designs of the logo. So it was used so it could be modified for the port and harbor, or chamber, or economic development. We provided sample ads that they could use in their marketing and advertising. Extra Tufts are the fishing shoe that they wear there. So this has the authenticity of the extra tufts. On the side, you've got a Norwegian, it's rose maling, so it goes back to their heritage. And these are all sample ideas for ads, incorporating in the logo and the tagline, "Little Norway, Big Adventure." And gives you some language there that they can use, which is practical, unheralded, never forgotten, a deliberate symbol of hard work and dependability, mirrored by the people who wear them. In short, it's not the weather, it's your shoes. And that's Extra Tufts, and a way to promote Petersburg, Alaska. Another advertisement there is their fish hook, similar in tone, made of stone, wood, and metal, the simplest of tools wielded by Norwegian ancestors, providing not only food and industry, but the start to some really great fish stories. So, once again, promotion for Petersburg, Alaska. We tied it back with a suggested webpage for them, using the same kind of play on the tagline, "What's your big adventure today?" Carrying it through, once again, you see the rose maling on the left, "Little Norway, Big News", a way to spin that for their chamber newsletter, promotional brochures, tourism brochures, into basic things like logo and letterhead. Signage, wayfinding signage. One thing that we do, we realize that budgets are tight everywhere, so we look at ways that we can give you ideas to modify existing signage and infrastructure. And this is an example of that. Also here, you see the Petersburg logo, an example of rework of the Sandy Beach Park sign. Some ideas for swag that can be handed out to prospects, or sold, if you have a tourist office, for displays, if you do a lot of roadshows. On the right is a box, they ship a lot of fishing goods. This was a great opportunity to push that brand out all around the country, and all around the world. And my favorite is on the left, they sent us this picture yesterday. And this project started, I don't know if you have a lot of Petersburg.
Late last year.
Okay, so late last year, the project started, you're starting to see it implement, it takes some time. And one of our favorite things in the office is when we get pictures sent to us of things that have been done. On the left, the manhole cover with the Petersburg, Alaska sign, is something that they've just implemented as they've rolled out new infrastructure and new things throughout the community. So it's exciting to see it take hold, and people really embrace that. Also, these are some local examples, with a Ram dealership, coffee house that incorporated the logo and incorporated the feel for the brand. And now Anthony is going to talk to us a little bit about Marathon County.
Yeah, so we wanted to show you a county example as well, obviously. Again, with Petersburg, lots of really exciting, back to this just real quickly here. All of these examples are examples of either other organizations or other entities within Petersburg implementing the brand, or elements of the brand, outside of any push from any organization. So this is free advertising, essentially. Ram reached out to them because they said, "Guess what? We think your brand fits with ours, so we want to do an all-expenses-paid trip to Petersburg, Alaska in association." Their radio station reached out and changed the name of their after-school radio program, called it Little Volunteers, Big Fun. That top right is a pin for their museum, again, done by the museum. Jabahous is rebranding some of their drinks and pastries to be Norwegian. And then on the left, there's Holland American Airlines, who reached out to them and said, "Hey, that's a cool story about your new brand, and being Alaska's Little Norway, that fits with us." Again, all examples of free advertising, and their brand doing work for them in the marketplace. So, Marathon County, Wisconsin. They were a county that was dealing with trying to find a way to market themselves, and market the fact that they were centrally located. It was clear that that was their biggest economic development asset. They had easy access for a lot of businesses, and that's why they were seeing some economic development growth. But they were having a hard time utilizing that for residents and for tourism. What does that mean for all of our other assets in the community? And we're really looking to attract not just businesses, but the families associated with businesses. How can we make this message really a little bit softer? And all of the research led us to this strategic brand platform. For those seeking an affordable, active, secure lifestyle, Marathon County, situated between Green Bay and Minneapolis, and the gateway to Wisconsin's Northwoods, is centered in its geography, its values, and its culture, providing you a life-work balance of support, resources, and opportunity. And that led us to this logo and tagline, "Wisconsin Central Time", playing off that idea of them being centrally located, but that when you're there, you have the opportunity to be centered, relaxed, at peace, and that it encourages all of your endeavors to launch from that point, when your staff is more centered and relaxed, or being able to live in the moment, those types of thoughts. I'm going to read you their brand narrative, which is a part of our creative process, where we explain essentially, write out this colorful language that explains the essence of that brand, which is really hard to communicate sometimes. So we write a brand narrative, and for Marathon County, it goes like this. "In Marathon County, you're in a whole different zone. To be on Wisconsin Central Time is to live in the moment. It might be the moment a fly hits the water after a perfect cast, 30 minutes after leaving your office, or the moment the last red rays of a summer sun viewed from your back porch as you sip a glass of red wine, or all of the above, all in one day, in a place that lets you be extraordinarily laid-back, cosmopolitan, and business class all at once. In Wisconsin Central Time, it's not about living to work, or working to live, but about living fully, about enjoying the kind of balance that allows you to approach every day with heightened anticipation. One reason such rare equilibrium is possible, time is on your side here. You're close to the best of everything Wisconsin has to offer. You can paddle a world-class whitewater run in the morning, work in the afternoon, and take in a play, a concert, or a Twins game that evening. But Wisconsin Central Time isn't just the abundance of exceptional experiences at your doorstep. It's an attitude that elevates the richness of everyday moments above the artificially momentous, work, play, live, in whatever order suits you. Recreate, recreate, and renew yourself. Never feel rushed, it's a marathon, not a sprint. The time is always right, because you're in a zone that beckons you to seize the day, catch and release, and enjoy it all again tomorrow. Marathon County, Wisconsin Central Time." So that logo and strategy and brand narrative led us to a number of things. Of course, we wanted to, for them, design some logos for some of their partners in the area to use it. This one on the left is their organization, Marathon County Development Organization, as well as their County Chamber of Commerce. as well as their County Seat Chamber of Commerce. We also designed some really simple boilerplate ways to just incorporate the brand into some of the cities underneath the county. And just, let me just take a moment to talk about logo families. We have a number of examples of these, these always look different in different either regions or counties that we work with. If you think to some of the most famous brand families, if you think Tiger Woods and Air Jordan under Nike, you know, sometimes they're not exactly the same. Or even, you know, Apple products, or a number of different logo families that play out in different ways. Again, we can show you some examples of that if you're interested in looking at how different counties or regions have incorporated the brand identity into the cities and towns underneath it. But this is just one example here from Marathon County. We did some advertising for them as well. Here's an example, again, focused on the life-work balance, trying to attract new businesses based on that quality of life. "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second best time is now." That's a Chinese proverb. Again, here, just focused on the quality of life in Marathon County. "If you spend your whole life waiting for the storm, you'll never enjoy the sunshine." Again, more advertising here focused on living in the moment, which is a big part of Marathon County Central Time. "You must live in the present, launch yourself on every wave, find your eternity in each moment." We also designed some visitors' guides for them, web portals for the county and some of the communities within it, which again, here's a great example of how other counties and regions have worked together to market their county and region as a whole, web portals. This is a way that essentially is just a splash page or a really simple website that encompasses the brand and also links out to all of the other cities and towns within the county. There's a website designed for the Economic Development Organization, for the County Seat Chamber of Commerce, letterhead, economic development prospecting packages, some different looks specific to different types of prospects that they have. Again, some signage, as Lori mentioned, you know, conserving budgets, working it into existing signage. Some more examples of that, some signage as well as poll banners. Billboard design, focusing on, you know, certain testimonials of CEOs within Marathon County, asking them to talk about why the quality of life in Wisconsin, or at Marathon County, Wisconsin, make a difference for their business. And here's some examples of some brand action ideas. Really, again, kind of boilerplate, beginning level stuff, or just kind of basic integration, different infrastructure design. That barn is existing in Marathon County. If you can convince a farmer to let him, to let you paint up his barn, that's a pretty cool way to implement there. Also, crosswalks. We also suggested a campaign called The Power of Now, and this was a really wide camp, really diverse campaign focused on a number of things, everything from volunteerism to new employees, to a Power of Now prospecting team that was all dedicated to being there in the moment, ready to answer any prospect's questions or be available to work with them. Again, all focused on Marathon County's Wisconsin Central Time. And then also, we suggested some business incubators in the heart of the brand as well.
So now, I think you probably have a good feel for what we do and a little bit of a feel for how we do it. So where we are now is in step number one, which is to know what they're saying, which is the research. From there, we move into the best space for Montgomery County based on those conversations. After our insights, when all of the research is completed, I'll return to Montgomery County and I'll do a debrief presentation, so you'll get to see that research and understand that and kind of know what came out of all of that. Our step after that is to bring to life the brand, the logo, the tagline, so we work through a creative process and develop that, and then we'll connect that brand promise back into the community through those brand action ideas. We'll provide some of those for you. So that's what's coming up next. And where we are now is on step number one and two. Oh, sorry. We've, we're here for our in-market tour, we arrived yesterday, we're here until Thursday. Anthony and I are, he said, take me in all of the sites with Ken and Jackie, and might have been right in your backyards before you know it, we'll tell you later if we got a picture of you. We'll be analyzing our vision survey, which is still open. If you have information on that, I've got cards I'll give out to you at the end. Soon we'll be launching our community-wide survey, so you, as important people and pillars in your communities, we'll get some information out to you. Please encourage people to answer that survey when it goes out, and we've probably got about three weeks before we send out the community survey. We'll start working internally. When we get back, Anthony and I will do a debrief with our entire team at North Star. We'll look through kind of what we've learned on this and begin talking as a team, we've got about 12, 15 people in our office who come together, who really work through all of these processes together to come up with that. We'll start working on our competitive analysis, and then after all the research is complete, we'll work on the understanding and insight presentation. So that's what we're doing here in Montgomery County. Are there any questions that we can answer for you? I consider it a perfect presentation if there are no questions, so thank you, I'd like you. If there are any questions, we've got cards here, and I'll leave them up on the, I'll leave them with you, you'll make sure those get out. And if anybody has any questions, please look at our website, we have lots of case studies and lots of examples. If you have any questions, email me, call me. We are doing perception interviews, if anyone has information that they'd like to share, just shoot me an email or give me a call, we'll get something scheduled. So thank you very much for your time. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Barbara, on favor?
Hi.
Let's see.
Brian and myself.